This regular meeting of the Village of Villa Park Planning and Zoning Commission to order, roll call. Calvert.
Here.
Hofstra.
Here.
Jackson. Ludke.
Here.
Orlowsky.
Here.
Romano.
Here.
Shlinsky.
Here.
Lemieux.
Here.
I too am present. With that, we have a quorum. So, we're here tonight to discuss the comprehensive plan, and I think you've got the floor.
Okay. Can you all hear me? All right, I'll take it away. I'm gonna actually stand over here so I can see the presentation that I'm talking about. Thank you all for having us tonight. Really appreciate you putting together a special meeting and coming out, and it's a pretty exciting time for Villa Park and for a document that's gonna guide the village and really be, help you all in the work that you do as planning and zoning commissioners. So, just first and foremost, we heard your names. Our consultant team that's here in the field today. My name is Josh Kuntz. I'm a senior planner with House de Levine. I'll be the project manager for the duration of the project. Basically, any meeting that we do as part of this process or any activity that we do, I'll be here for it. And then I'm joined today by Nick Davis, principal with House de Levine. He also will be onboard, part of the core team for the project, start to finish, in the role of principal oversight and QAQC, quality control. Make sure that everything that we do meets the high standards that we have and that the village has. And Oscar Martinez here will be the lead planner on the project. So, everything from drafting up meeting summaries for any meeting that we do to doing some of the plan drafting and text drafting, map making, and coordinating with the rest of our full team. House de Levine is a firm based out of Chicago. We, that's where our first office is, and now we have offices also in Los Angeles and in Seattle. This team is based out of Chicago, so just a quick hop over to Chicago to get here. And then on the other side, you can see there KLWA, a firm that the village has done some work with before and is now a transportation and infrastructure engineering firm. We love to partner with these types of firms to really make sure that when we get into specific recommendations for transportation, you know, even bikeways, sidewalks, and then detailed infrastructure, that we can really ground-truth those recommendations and make sure that they, they're real and they're actionable. We've worked with KLWA on several projects throughout the Illinois, throughout the Chicago region and throughout Illinois. We're currently working with them in countryside and several other places in the region. So, trusted partners of ours. Tonight, what I'd like to do is just go through the planning process for the comprehensive plan. I wanna talk a little bit about this body's involvement in the process from start to finish. And the bulk, really, tonight of what we're doing is going to be an exercise where we're gonna talk about issues and opportunities with the group and with anyone here who's here to listen in. We're gonna do some rating and ranking on the post-it board here, and then we'll talk next steps. So, a comprehensive plan, we sometimes say that it's a blueprint for the next two decades. It's the village's guiding document. So, it's a vision, goals, and then the actions and implementation items that help the village achieve those long-term goals. It should clearly identify the community's desires, needs, aspirations. So, if we were able to look ahead about two decades, 20 years is a typical horizon for a comprehensive plan, what would we wanna see for Villa Park? What would we wanna see as a result of the comprehensive plan? And it does guide a broad range of topics. It is at its core a land use planning and policy document. So, what would the future land use, if the village was fully built out, would be the ideal future land use scenario for the village? But more and more modern comprehensive plans are incorporating a variety of things, from core elements such as housing in neighborhoods, transportation, community facilities, parks in open space, economic development, and then even you're starting to see policies and recommendations for things like sustainability and resiliency woven through modern comprehensive planning. A big one right in the middle there, a good comprehensive plan is implementable, and it really should give the village a big return on its investment. If you, if you're a staff person at the village or someone who's applying for a grant, one of the first questions on any grant application, if you're teeing up another stormwater study or a detailed transportation study, parking study, and you're gonna apply for some grant funding to do that, one of the first questions is gonna be, what does your comprehensive plan say about green infrastructure or stormwater or whatever? And that's not to say that the comprehensive plan has to have a full section on stormwater, but if the, it may tee up some of those things that the village can go and pursue that funding and actually start to get things done. And communities with comprehensive plans that are specific to their needs and that are actionable will really see these documents be used in a way that's positive and sort of magnifies the investment. It is, it's a document that at its core is about land use, so it's gonna inform those decisions on growth and development. We'll talk about it a little bit tonight, I'm sure, but Villa Park is landlocked, mostly landlocked, so where are those areas? If growth and development's gonna occur, where are those priority sites and where are those things that, over the next 20 years, thinking out long-term, where are the areas that are gonna change and grow for the village? And then in this specific project, not all comprehensive plans have them, but we're including some sub-area planning, so detailed planning. If the comprehensive plan is a high-level document that looks at the whole village, the whole municipal boundary, sub-area plans drill down and take a closer look, maybe at the old-town area on Villa, for example, could be one of the sub-areas, where we're looking more specifically at things like intersection treatments, streetscaping, public realm improvements, things that we couldn't really look at village-wide, but we may wanna look at in these sort of catalytic areas where if that change was going to occur, could really have a positive effect for the whole village. So, we have a six-step planning process, but really what I want you to just take away from this is that, you know, there could be, there could be 32 steps here, but any good planning process really only has to do three things. And first of all, that has to establish where we are today. Secondly, it has to establish where do we wanna go? And then finally, it has to establish how are we gonna get there, and it has to provide the way that we're gonna do that. So, if you look at this, this schedule of steps, and I'll show you a more detailed timeline of our scope in just a minute, really, step one and two are all about the where are we today? And that's what we're doing even here tonight, the issues and opportunities discussion that we're gonna have. We know a lot about planning. House de Levine has done planning now in, has done more than 400 comprehensive plans across, I think we're into 30 states at this point. So, we have a ton of knowledge about what good planning and policy is for a community the size of Villa Park, and we've done a lot of planning in Illinois. So, we have a lot of best practices and a lot of knowledge, but we don't know Villa Park like the people in this room do, and we acknowledge that. So, this whole first part of the process is about us listening to the people who know the village best, steps one and two. We wrap that up in an existing conditions report. Think of that as our sort of book report on the community. Do we have our heads on straight before we get into the visioning and the policies and the recommendation? Step three really is that crux of the plan, the turning point. So, where do we wanna go? We're gonna do a community-wide visioning workshop, we're gonna talk to the business community, and we're gonna start thinking long-term with the community. We're gonna get some of the feedback on what is that vision for the next 20 years for Villa Park? And we'll put together a key recommendations memo and a land use framework to sort of solidify where we wanna go for the future before we get into the how are we gonna get there? The sub-area plans and the core elements, the policy chapters of the plan, policy for housing in neighborhoods, policy for economic development, the village's commercial and industrial areas. Package that all together in something that's implementable, easy to understand, written in plain English, the maps will be clear, and it'll be something that anybody can pick up, whether you're the village president, planning and zoning commissioner, staff looking to write a grant report, or a resident looking to, a prospective resident looking to purchase a home in the community. What's the village's vision for the future? So, again, we're sitting right here at step one, kickoff in existing conditions tonight. And even within those steps, we have several tasks and subtasks to our scope of work. We're looking at probably a 15 to 18-month process over, to accomplish all of these things. And you can see those first two blue steps right there. We're solidly in step one right now. We've also prepared some of the public engagement tools already. Those items are in staff review before they go out to the public. And then we'll be looking over the next couple of months to start to get into that community-wide outreach and that listening process with the community. There's a lot of opportunities for involvement, and this slide just sort of pulls out those different opportunities for meeting with the community along the way. So, tonight, we're doing the Planning and Zoning Commission roundtable. We'll do a similar exercise to this with the village board. We're looking forward to a community-wide visioning workshop, and then opportunities to engage in person with the community throughout the process, as well as online opportunities throughout the process. So, if somebody can't make it out in person, there will be opportunities to weigh in through the website, and I'll show you what that looks like at the end of the night. I guess before we move on to the part of the night where we wanna hear from you, is there any questions about our process, the purpose of a comprehensive plan, House de Levine, what we're doing here? Oh. Okay, well, Oscar's gonna hand out some worksheets for you all, and this is the exercise that we'll be doing tonight. It's low-tech, but I think we'll find that it gets some good participation and good engagement. Does everybody have a pen? We're gonna need a pen for this. Mark, do you have any? Mark's gonna grab a couple for anybody who doesn't have one.
I also have one.
Mark's getting one.
He's grabbing some extra.
Let him do his one.
Okay, so this is critical. It's tempting to work ahead. I wasn't a work-ahead student, but if you were, don't move on to question two until we complete question one. That's the way the exercise is structured. So, we're just gonna focus our efforts on question one for the moment. And I want you to actually write these down. The only way that we get the information back, we listen, we take notes, but we, if you want us to know something, get it on the paper, and we're gonna collect those at the end of the evening and take it back as we summarize our meetings and start to put things into different planning buckets as we move along. So, the first question, jot these down on your paper, your top five issues or concerns facing Villa Park? Top five issues or concerns that are facing Villa Park today, from your perspective. I'll give you a couple minutes to do that. Give you just a couple more minutes here. Top five issues, top five. Okay, we'll go around and get started here. So, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna just, I'll start up here at the table and we'll work our way around. I just want you to say one of your top five. It's gonna be tempting to try and cram a two, a couple together, or say, you know, there's this one, plus I also wanted to add this, but just try to stick to one of your top five, and we're gonna go around, snake around the room and build a collective list. So, I'll start over here. One of your top five, what's one of your top five issues facing Villa Park?
So, lack of north-south connectivity and the perceived divide between the north and south part of the community.
Okay.
Which is sometimes perceived as the railroad, but also St. Charles Road.
Right. Okay, so, what I'm gonna try to do, because we've got limited space up here, you'll say an issue. I'm gonna try and summarize it in three to four words so Oscar can jot it down. I'll try and state it into the mic so everybody can hear it. And what I forgot to ask is, just in the interest of getting to know you all, how about name and how many years you've been in Villa Park and anything else that you wanna just quickly say briefly before we?
So, I'm Jason Jarrett, planning, chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've been in Villa Park since 2004.
2004, nice. So, Jason, thank you. And the first one that we have here is the north-south divide, physical north-south divide in the community. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, next, I guess first name and how many years in the village here?
At Hofstra, I've been in Villa Park for about six years now. I've lived in the western suburbs here for 40 years. Okay? My, I head on here, the landlocked and the opportunities that it presents for business growth.
Okay.
In other words, to grow business.
Right. So, could we sum that up as landlocked constraints on businesses?
Mm-hmm.
Village is landlocked. Landlocked constraints on businesses.
Sure.
How are you?
My name is Justin Shlinsky. I've been in the village for seven years. I agree with what my colleagues have said already. If I had to pick one, I would say the old-town feel versus modernization dichotomy, or sometimes it's a discrepancy.
So, how do we tangle with that push and pull, preserving the old-town and what it used to be or looks like against?
I think trying to bridge the gap of what I perceive to be a dichotomy in the public spaces.
Okay.
Public and private, the business spaces, but the community trying to bridge that gap between old-town historic preservation and modernization and getting us into the 2020s and likewise moving to the 2040s.
Right, okay. So, could we just say, for the purposes of the board, historic preservation slash versus modernization?
Sure.
All right, good.
Eric Ludke. I've been in this town for my entire life, 51 years. Been on planning and zoning for three or four years, three maybe? I don't even know. I think our recreation facilities need a little help throughout the, throughout the village.
So, let's just say, just recreation facilities, let's just put that on there. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
All right, good. We'll come around the table here.
Well, I think I'm next.
Yep.
I'm Larry Calvert. I've lived here almost 10 years. I came here from a neighboring community that shall remain nameless. But I think one of the biggest issues facing Villa Park is something that we've never really been able to wrap our arms around, and that is to maximize our natural resources, and specifically our location within DuPage County, our proximity to the city, and our transportation, the highways, the interstates, O'Hare also close. But one of the biggest misses, I think, is our inability to take what we have that no one else has, and that's this wonderful green belt that runs right through the center of our town, and how do we really maximize that? It's something that we have and no one else has.
Okay. Almost sounds like you squeezed two, a couple in there, but, but I think I heard maximize location.
Yeah.
And then also maximize the, you called it the green belt, but I think you're referring to the various, maximize natural resources. So, we'll just, we'll do two there. And the transportation stuff, proximity to the city, all that stuff I think goes along with location. I'm gonna come around this way so I can see you all. All right.
Mike Orlowsky. I've been on planning and zoning for a while. I've been in the village since 1965. To sum up all mine, direction. Our village has no direction.
Lack of direction.
Lack of direction.
And a good comprehensive plan can help with that, ideally.
My name's, excuse me, Dominic Romano. I've been in the village for 19 years. I've been on the commission for six possibly. The ones I had, one of the ones I had developed is an underdeveloped metro station area. It's kind of with an asterisk because I know things are in the works, maybe, but I think that needs to be developed more thoroughly.
Okay, good. Develop the metro station area. Another one of those transportation assets.
I'm Louis Lemieux. I've been here for over 40 years in Villa Park, and, see, this is my second one, I think, on the commission. And, let's see, again, I agree with everyone here, and another thing, though, that the residents, taking what the residents' biggest concern at these public meetings seems to be the continuing infrastructure improvement. That seems to be the biggest concern. And I think we're, Villa Park is on their way, and it's only recently that they've really been aggressive at it, but maintaining an aggressive infrastructure improvement program.
Okay, and are we talking about like transportation infrastructure or pipes?
Actually, yeah.
Sewer, storm sewer, water, broadband?
Yeah, even that too.
Okay, so just generally maintaining infrastructure?
Well, great. Bringing it up to current standards.
Okay, we'll move back here.
I'll say environmental conservation.
Environmental conservation. That's a nice two, that fits right on the board. So, give Oscar a minute here, he's gonna be putting these up on this wall back here, so we can see all of them. Need a hand? You got it, Oscar. I'll remember number nine when you get back there. I guess this would be a good point, just to say, if we're starting, you know, we're into nine issues already, if we get to you and all of yours are taken, just say pass. We'll do the sorting and lumping together and agreeing and seconding in just a little bit, but that's part of this exercise. If we've gone through the, if we've gone through the list and we're starting to build some consensus, just pass on to the next person.
Carrie Olhano, I've lived in this village for about ten years, and it kind of goes with the connectivity of the north and the south. Most of mine have already been taken, but we have these paths that go east-west for the most part. We don't have many that connect from the Roosevelt Road area.
Right.
Up this way, specifically the paths going to, kind of connecting two of those ideas together.
So you're talking about the Prairie Path and Great Western Trail, but you're right, those go east-west, so that was broadly north-south divide, and you're talking specifically, it sounds like, about bike and pedestrian, north-south connectivity. So number nine was environmental conservation. And I think, could we sum up number ten as north-south bike-ped connection?
To get people to the train station.
Right, yeah.
My name's Joey, I've been here twenty-five years. Most of mine have been taken somewhere...
Turn that fan down, can't hear.
Basically, at least down. Coordination, we don't really have a good strategy for how to develop an area, whatever area it might be, it just kind of, whatever ends up there, ends up there.
So it's feeling a little bit piecemeal?
Very much. You gotta put a hair salon next to a body shop.
Right, okay. Yeah, so I guess it sounds like maybe the issue is sort of results in what we would say, land use incompatibility, that uses are incompatible, but you called it coordinated development?
Kind of like what Mike said, that we don't have any direction.
Okay.
I would break that down more by area and say, nor that, maybe we should be looking for these types of businesses and going after them and getting them.
Right.
And turning away others, and both fiscal and, at least, storage areas.
Okay.
Different areas, does it make that to be more of a neighborhood, who's looking for housing, better housing perhaps, smaller convenience stores, drag cleaners, that kind of thing.
Right.
That's more tuned to that particular area. We don't have anything like that, it's just whatever shows up, shows up.
Okay, so I'd say maybe a need for coordinated development. Good one, yeah, thank you.
Nick Cazola, I've been in Villa Park about thirty-eight years. Again, a lot of my comments have been taken, but I think one aspect that people are interested is public safety, especially with the crime that's coming into DuPage County, but public safety is a big issue with residents, police and fire.
Yeah, so public safety, number twelve. All right, we're gonna go around one more time, again, if all taken, just say pass, but we're at a list of twelve, I believe, at the moment.
Lack of housing choice for older residents.
Yeah, good, so if you're starting to get a little bit older and you're looking to move out of your home, downsize from your home, can you stay in the village, right?
Generally speaking, you cannot.
Yeah, so senior housing choice, could we?
Mm-hmm.
We say that, yep?
Continued improvement in flood mitigation.
Okay, yeah.
I guess you in DuPage.
Yep, storms are getting stronger, there's more water, so flood mitigation.
Has less to do with the comp plan, but issues concerning Villa Park, just lack of engagement and miscommunication.
And is that just generally, for the whole community?
I think in part that's also dealing with too much misinformation coming from bad sources with regards to the improvements that are currently taking place.
So could we just sum that up as miscommunication, or?
Okay.
Miscommunication.
A municipal campus.
Municipal campus. We're kind of in one, but is it, would you really call it a campus? I don't know, yeah?
Yeah, right, if I close and squint my eyes, yes.
Municipal campus, need for municipal campus.
One of my other ones was controlling blight in commercial, industrial, and residential areas.
Yeah, so controlling blight throughout the villages' various areas. Controlling blight? Anything left?
Parking plan.
Need a parking plan?
Parking plan for businesses.
What's the, what's the parking issue?
I think we need big, open spaces for parking lots, we should have centralized parking for businesses.
Okay, all right, so need for a parking plan. Anything else on the list over here?
I noted a consolidated downtown area, because we have several little hubs, but...
Which one is the downtown, right? I, you know, I was, we were, we've been here all day, we've been driving around, and I did say this earlier, and I think it's true, Villa Park has several areas that a lot of towns wish they could have, if they could just have any sort of a downtown. There's communities that don't have any of that, and you all have about three or four areas that you could sort of say, this is the downtown. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting flip side of the coin, where some communities are trying to retrofit a part of their, their, their community to be more like a downtown, and you all have the great bones in several different spots around the community. How are we gonna sum that up? Sorry, I got a little sidetracked there, but...
Centralized downtown.
Centralized downtown, consolidated downtown, right. Anything left on the list here?
I was kind of dovetailing into controlling blight, but establishing appearance standards, especially in commercial areas.
Yeah, okay. Oscar, I'll get you when you get back with that last one.
Are there communities that you think have done a good job with their appearance standards? Who would that be?
Oh, like Glen Ellen, I think Lombard, especially on St. Charles. St. Charles, it seems to be more like Roosevelt and North Avenue, and I think it needs to, it needs to improve St. Charles.
You can thank the 1980s iDOT for that, when they widened St. Charles.
But, right, I would agree.
Yeah, have you all heard the term strode? Too many, too many strods, not enough streets. The street has a lot of different components. But need for appearance standards for commercial areas, right? Come back over here.
All of mine have been taken, so I'll pass.
All right, first pass, there we go.
I think most of mine have been taken, it could attach to parks and recs, but some year-round businesses or activities for families of elementary and middle school, which is in particular.
Yeah, okay. Could we sum that up just for the board at least, for year-round family activities? Right here in Villa Park, don't have to go outside the community to do it, year-round family activities. Anything to add to the list?
Better planning for future public facilities and events.
Okay, so could we say, it's kind of two things there, but better planning for, or facilities planning is one of them, right? So the buildings that the village owns, and then also event planning? Would you say those kind of split into two?
Combination.
So facilities slash event planning?
We have a library that does a lot of parks and park stuff, but it doesn't locate it with the library, but also...
Gotcha.
Because we didn't think about it at the time, there's a lot of stuff like that, we played it out better over a long term.
Yeah.
I've only got one thing left, and it's not so much for planning, but it's payment for pensions.
What, sorry, what was that?
Pensions.
Payment for pensions.
Picking up a lot of the budget. I think most people don't realize it, but, you know, fear about, or do you realize it's becoming a big issue of trying to find money for it.
Right, so payment for pensions. All right, we are at a list of twenty-three, I guess anyone have anything that's not been covered yet, just, yeah?
I'm gonna play my chairman card, because I think it's a big one. Pursuing annexation and redevelopment opportunities in the northeast part of the village.
Yeah, pursuing annexation in the northeast. There's not too many areas where annexation can occur, and that's one of them, right?
Yep.
I would say south, there's a big, big south.
Yeah, just leave off the direction there, so pursuing the annexations that are available.
Pursuing annexation.
Anyone else?
Can you put actively pursuing? There, please.
Now you're getting into the solutions.
That's another reason.
Roll me on step one, Jason.
Anyone else?
I see these planners and all that.
Anyone else with anything that hat isn't, yeah?
St. Charles Road, road diet.
St. Charles Road Diet. That goes, let's see.
Yeah, I think that falls at one, and...
What does that mean? Road diet, what does that mean?
A road diet is when you...
Shrink.
So it typically involves removal of a lane or two lanes, sometimes adding in on-street parking, you know, there's varying degrees of how much you can diet a road. Sometimes it involves bringing out the sidewalk a little bit further, making a wider walk. It can include things like parkways or bump, what we would call bumpouts, so that there's a bumped-out area of the sidewalk, so you have less distance to walk across the road. Usually the end result of a good road diet, if it's done well, is that traffic moves a little bit slower, people can get across the road easier, the road becomes a street instead of a road.
Right.
And, yeah, people are more comfortable being out there, walking, interacting with the businesses, and, you know, sometimes they're met with trepidation, and often, if they're done well, that, that street then becomes a community asset instead of a highway, so. Anyone else? Anything that's not on the list? And again, please, write these down, so if, even if you think of one as we're going through and you wanna add one in, write down your top issues and concerns. And we now have a list of twenty-five, that's a good menu, so we're gonna have to pivot our heads this way, if you're, sorry if you're facing the other direction. The next question, need my, the next question is, out of the collective list, what are the three most important? So you came here tonight with your top five, right? And then you heard from your fellow commissioners and folks here in the audience, and we built together this collective, this collective list of twenty-five, so maybe there's something that you had never considered before, like, oh, what's a good one? Historic preservation versus modernization, and you think, oh, that's a, that's actually a really good one, I wasn't thinking that when I walked in, but that is one of the top three. So for your, for the next question, I don't want you to rewrite the issue, just write the number of the issue. So if your, if your top three were historic preservation versus modernization, public safety, and senior housing, you'd put three, twelve, thirteen in your, under question number two. And you can get up and take a look, if you need to get a little closer, or if you want one called out, if you can't quite read it or remember it, just ask me and I'll, I'll call them out to you. Give you just a minute to think through that, and I know that some of them are similar, and some of them should be grouped, so stick to the numbers and pick your top, pick the top three.
Since there's some old eyes here, could maybe somebody read through them real quick?
Yeah, Oscar, of course. Oscar can read through them, and then if we need to clarify or expand any of them, we'll do that, too.
So number one is the north-south divide, number two, landlocked constraints on business, number three, historic preservation versus modernization, number four, recreation centers, number five, maximize location and natural resources, number six, lack of direction, number seven, develop metro station area, number eight, maintaining and improving infrastructure, number nine, environmental conservation, number ten, north-south divide, but more particularly bike and pedestrian, number eleven, the need for coordinated development, twelve, public safety, thirteen, senior housing choices, number fourteen, flood mitigation, fifteen, miscommunication, sixteen, need for municipal campus, seventeen, controlling blight, eighteen, need for a parking plan, nineteen, consolidated downtown, twenty, appearance standard for commercial areas, twenty-one, year-round family activities, twenty-two, facility and event planning, twenty-three, payment for pensions, twenty-four, pursuing annexation actively, twenty-five, the St. Charles Road Diet.
Okay, does everybody have their, their top three out of the list here? Anyone need another minute? Okay, what we're gonna do now, I'm gonna ask Oscar to read through them one more time, and then if you voted for that one, raise your hand, raise it nice and high, keep it up until I get him the count, he's gonna jot down the count next to the number, so. Show of hands. How many said, agreed with number one, north-south divide, one of your top three? We got three hands up, three. Number two, how many agreed with landlocked constraints on businesses? How many had number two? Zero? Yeah, I'll just read them since I have the mic, Oscar. Number three, historic preservation versus modernization. I see two. Number four, need for a recreation center? Zero. Number five, maximize location and natural resources? I see two. Number six, lack of direction? Two, three, four, five. Number seven, develop the area around the metro station? One, two, three, four. Four? Number eight, maintaining and improving infrastructure? Three? Number nine, environmental conservation? Number 10, north-south, uh, bike and pedestrian connections. We've got the east-west, need the north-south. Eleven? Is that one and a half?
Apparently we only get three votes, so.
Choose wisely.
All right, number 11, need for coordinated development? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, I count seven. Number 12, public safety? 13, uh, senior housing options, choices? 14, flood mitigation? Okay, zero. 15, miscommunication? Uh, 16, need for a municipal campus? Zero. 17, uh, controlling blight? None? 18, need for a, uh, parking, why can't I read that? Plan? Yeah, that was a little messy there. Need for a parking plan? Uh, 18? Zero? 19, consolidated centralized downtown? 20, appearance standards for commercial areas? Got one? 21, year-round family activities? 22, facilities and event planning? None? 23, payment for pensions? Got one? 24, uh, pursuing annexation actively? And then 25, the St. Charles Road Diet? Okay, so what were the, what were the top three here, Oscar?
Uh, the need for coordinated development was the most with seven. Uh, number two was lack of direction with five, and then number three was develop metro station area with four. Uh, there was a couple with three, which was maintaining and improving infrastructure and the north-south divide, and then a handful with two, can we read those? Two, uh, maximize location and natural resources, historic preservation versus modernization, senior housing choices, pursuing annexation actively, and the St. Charles Road Diet, and then a few with one, north-south divide with bike and pedestrian infrastructure, uh, appearance standards for commercial areas, and then payment for pensions.
Okay. Yeah, so you can see, it's, you know, some things floated to the top, the need for coordinated development, uh, lack of direction, and a list like this, you know, the, the comprehensive plan, again, it guides a wide range of policy documents, and if it's, if it's a good document that's uh, useful and implementable, it should help uh, the village do what we just did, which is prioritize the things that are most important, the most actionable, and make sure that the village is able to move the needle, or partner with the right um, organization or person to do, to get these things done, and provide a, a roadmap for how to get there. So, um, the comprehensive plan can help make some of this decision-making and the sort of agonizing choosing between the, how are we gonna uh, uh, direct ourselves uh, over the next uh, couple of decades? The comprehensive plan should be a tool to help the decision-makers for the village get that done. I want to move on to the next question, which is, three specific projects or actions that you would like to see undertaken, and another way to think about this is, what is something specifically that you would propose, you've maybe been thinking about it a long time, maybe it came to you tonight as you were looking at this list? Uh, but if your top issue was lack of direction, uh, the, the priority project wouldn't be to find direction. What would you specifically do, uh, to put the village on that course? Um, what would you do to address, uh, senior housing choice? Where's the, where's the location for that? What's the building for that? Um, so, three priority projects or actions that could actually, um, uh, help positively impact these issues, uh, and, or, or maybe it's something completely outside of this. You want to see a new water park in the middle of, uh, the village, or something like that, but get specific on your paper, and please, yeah, again, write them down so that we have that, uh, that input. Okay, we'll just do this one a little bit more of kind of informally, but if you have a priority project or action you want to share, just raise your hand and we'll, yeah, right over here.
Um, so specifically, uh, north-south bike routes and protected crossings across St. Charles, and I think viable options for that could be Harvard Avenue and Summit Avenue.
Okay, so some very specific, uh, north-south routes with the actual north-south, uh, right-of-ways identified, yeah? Good.
Connecting the Prairie Paths, the train station area, potentially as far south as, I mean, maybe Roosevelt, but.
Nice.
Absolutely, Roosevelt.
That's, that's, you need crossings of St. Charles, and then from there, it gets trickier, crossing the tracks, but a pedestrian underpass at Harvard, possibly under the railroad, or you're close that you could come back towards Ardmore, but I don't think Ardmore is the best place to shuttle people north and south the full length of the village.
Good. Who has another one? Yeah?
Senior housing, and the location of the old two-story bank building by the Jewelry Exchange, that whole corridor, you'd have, uh, access to the highway. The seniors need to go to the hospital. Um, you've got a lot of green space, you have walking distance to, uh, Old Town, and it's a very undeveloped area.
Yeah, nice. So, not only senior housing, let's do it, whoops, but also a specific location, uh, for it, yeah? Good. Anyone else? Another one? Yeah?
Okay, um, so we've already talked about potential underpasses, and of the, you know, the three specific projects, these are, so to speak, the three hills that I'll die on. Uh, pedestrian underpass at Metro, you can blow out part of the hill and make an underpass right there, I believe it's, Jason, you mentioned Harvard, I think another one is Illinois. If, I think you and I talked about that before, it's Illinois. And then a vehicular underpass, um, on Villa Avenue on the southern train track, or under the southern train track route, that would take likely some taking by the village, uh, from residential properties, but actually making a vehicular underpass, because we have to go if and when a train is stuck, and it's becoming more often than not now, uh, or more often than it has been in the past, you have to go out of town to get around it. You have to go to Elmhurst or Lombard. Villa has an opportunity, I believe Villa, uh, has an opportunity to kind of blow out that, uh, where the, the hilt is, and just make that an underpass.
Yeah, that's good. These, I recently read an article about how these freight trains are getting longer and longer, because obviously if you got longer trains, you can pull more stuff, uh, so, um, it's an issue for a variety of reasons. Some are scarier than others, but just crossing is a, that makes more of a pain if they're, they were going for a longer period of time, some of these things could be miles long. Anyone else? Priority proj, yeah?
Um, I would like to, um, to see a plan that would link the following areas, which is, uh, the, um, the metro station to Villa Avenue, across Park, and then north on Ardmore to create an entertainment district.
To create an entertainment district?
Using those streets to create a triangle, um, to develop that area.
Okay, good.
Can you say the streets again? Say that again?
Uh, from the metro train station, down Villa Avenue, across Park, and then north on Ardmore to create a triangle for, uh, some type of an entertainment district.
Okay. And what types of, uh, entertainment in the district? Restaurants?
Um, things that are pedestrian-friendly, a lot to, restaurants, cars, uh, that kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I think you nailed it in that, that's how, just people are more and more wanting to spend their money is on experiential stuff, like going out to eat, or going out to, uh, experience something, because we're, you know, buying everything from clothes to daily goods, uh, online, uh, so these areas that are interactive and have things to do are, are more and more important. Right there.
So Larry had mentioned earlier about Prairie Path being our unique, um, space compared to other villages, um, along this stretch. Um, we're talking pie in the sky, we're talking big ideas here. I've always thought, um, that that space can be completely enhanced, um, specifically take, take the, uh, overhead wires and, and bury them, and create this to be the most beautiful park through, through our town. Um, so it really needs to be, it's, it's our, it's our central park.
Right, yeah, that's a good point. There's a lot of width there, there's a lot you can do with it, burying the wires, uh, yeah, big idea, uh, recommendation.
And it connects two of our downtown hubs.
And it connects, yes.
Next right into the, uh, into the Old Town, yeah? Good one. Anyone else? Big idea, project or action? Yeah, another one?
We've talked about it, we've even voted on it, the St. Charles Road Diet, it's a specific project.
Right, okay. St. Charles Road Diet.
I was gonna say, um, again, uh, the storm sewer flood improvements, and taking care of that will allow further development, um, to occur.
Maybe not as flashy as the, uh, having the best segment of the Prairie Path, but it's kind of the unsung hero of any working municipality is good infrastructure. Okay, and again, you know, please write these down, um, we're obviously taking notes and everything, but we get your specific feedback when we collect your papers, so jot them down on your paper if you could. Um, but last but not least, you know, you're all, um, heavily invested in Villa Park. Uh, I assume all of you are residents of Villa Park, uh, most likely, um, and you've dedicated additional time to the village tonight, and, uh, in your role as a planning and zoning commissioner, um, every month to doing this, so you know the, you know the village better than anyone else perhaps, uh, the intricacies of it, and you know its strengths and assets, so what are the best things about Villa Park? What are the strengths and assets of the community? What makes you want to donate additional time to the place where you live? Uh, and what are the things, I guess another way to think about it from a comprehensive plan perspective, what are the things that need to be carried forward, that should still be here when we, um, are in 2044, uh, that horizon that we're looking out to, toward? What are the strengths and assets of the community? So I'll give you just a minute to jot them down, and then we can do these popcorn style again, just raise your hand and shout, shout them out. What are the top strengths and assets of the community, the things that we need to carry forward? Okay, we can just raise hands and shout them out. What are, what are these top strengths and assets? Go, kick it off. Diversity. Good.
We do have that Old Town feel.
Old Town feel. Nice.
Well, we have a strong sense of community because we have great community partners. Like we have the VFW, we have the Chamber, we have Tri-Town Y, and they all kind of contribute to making this great place.
Strong sense of community, great community partners. Could you jot those partners down on your paper, just to make sure? We're gonna be researching that kind of stuff as well, and I, that's a great point, actually, is that, um, any good plan that has an implementation action section at the end of it, it needs to identify who the partners are, because, um, I haven't seen a community yet that operates in a vacuum and can unilaterally take care of all of this stuff that the community wants to see. So, community partners are really critical. Yeah?
Our location to highways.
Location. Good.
Um, Village President.
Village? Very nice. Who, who is that person?
Here, 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 here.
You mean the current one?
Yeah, current one, yeah. That's the future. Our schools, yeah, we've got a really good school system and go partners.
Schools?
Kindergarten, all the way up to high school.
And that's a good example of one of those partners, you know, the village has limited control over, you know, no control really over the, the school board and the school district, um, but that's one of the reasons that people come to a community. Uh, all these other things we talked about, and then there's sort of the schools, people who move to a community and buy a home want to go where there's good schools, so that's a huge asset. Yeah?
And a key factor in that, our schools aren't just for Villa Park, they do cover some of Lombard, too, so we have, uh, some partnerships with Lombard community as well.
Right, good. Cross-community partnerships. Yep.
Our geographic location compared to the Prairie Path, where you western trail, Salt Creek Trail.
Yeah? So we have location in general, and then location specifically, pretty amazing, uh, that there's three trails sort of converging in the community, that's, um, pretty unprecedented. Very cool. Yeah?
Uh, good mix of reasonably priced, single-family housing.
Yeah. Nice. Good mix, reasonably priced, single-family housing. Yep.
Uh, we've talked about not-for-profit community, uh, partners and our school districts. Um, I think we should give a, I, I think an asset that is potentially underutilized, but is, I, I think a fantastic asset is our library.
Right? Nice new library, uh, key, uh, pillar of the community in any, any good community is the library.
And I'd like to see more brought to Ardmore, not to make it rhyme, but bring more to Ardmore, so that the library can be even more utilized. That, that Ardmore, like, park and central corridor needs a rejuvenation project, and helping with that would help stimulate, I think, more, um, travel and feasibility of use for the library itself.
Nice, okay. Anyone else? I'm sure you all could come up.
Metra line.
Metra, yeah. Not every community has that. Probably all put together a list of 100 things, um, for the community that you know and love. Maybe two more before we close out here? Anyone? Anyone? Nothing's off the table? Going once, going twice?
We're not Elmhurst.
We're not Elmhurst.
What I'll add is, in reality...
Hope they're not watching.
We have reasonable real estate taxes compared to our surrounding...
Yeah, reasonable.
Similar-sized houses and that, it's much more affordable to live here than... I lived in Elmhurst for 36 years, believe it or not.
More bang for the buck.
Lot more bang for the buck.
Yep, that's good. Okay, well, if anything else comes to mind, jot it on your paper, even after, you know, after you go home. If this got you thinking, shoot over your suggestions to Mark. Should've said that at the front end of this when I had that introduction, who are we slide. It's really important that the House de Levine team with KLOA onboard is doing this in lockstep with village staff, and that's how we tend to operate. So getting something to Mark is the same as getting it to us. And we're kind of the two touchpoints here and working together closely as a project team, not just a consultant team. Real quick on next steps, I told you that we're going to set up some online materials. Those are actually already set. They're in review with village staff to make sure that they're hitting the mark. But we will have a project website that's easy to navigate, easy to understand. When we do public meetings, we'll post summaries, generalized summaries of what we heard on this website. We'll put draft documents there as things are developed. This should be an open and easy-to-follow process. There's nothing about the comprehensive plan that needs to be done in secret or behind closed doors, and this is the hub for knowing what's going on with this process. There'll be a big link or button on the village's website. So if you forget the short link that we're going to create for this website, you can always just go to the village's website and it'll be right there. You can click and stay tuned to what we're doing. On the website, you're going to see an online questionnaire and map.social. The online questionnaire is tailored to Villa Park. It's easy to do, it's mobile-friendly, just like the website, you can do it on your phone. You might have a friend or a neighbor who just can't make it out to any of the public meetings. This is a, there's no one right way to participate. This is another way to participate and get your feedback in. There's multiple-choice questions and open-ended questions for people to participate from home or wherever they are. And in that questionnaire, there's a logic question too. So it'll say, if you're a business owner or operator in the village, would you take a couple more questions that are specific to owning and operating a business? Those folks sometimes have more specific or issues about the sign code or about the permitting process than your average resident may have. Map.social, that's a proprietary tool that House de Levine developed to be able to map assets, issues, opportunities on your own private, or your own personal map. Again, it's mobile-friendly. You do have to create a login so that you can return to your map and add and take things off of it. I'll show you what it looks like. Everybody's points will be public and you'll have the opportunity to sort and say like, what are all the different community assets that people identified? Where are all the problematic intersections? And this data goes, is GIS data that's being created by the community. And at the end of this process, we can take a look. Where's, where are sort of those hotspots for community assets? Or where are those hotspots for poor appearance, desired developments? All that data gets turned over to the village at the end of the process as well. So this is a public map of the community's issues and opportunities and assets, kind of like the exercise we just did, but map-based. And that's available through the website as well. So next steps for our team, we're going to work with Mark and Stephanie to launch the project website, the survey, map.social. We're going to distribute DIY workshop kits. These will be available through Mark and Stephanie on request. If somebody wants to take this workshop exercise that we just did, take it to your neighborhood group or your community, or, you know, your kid's school group or a group of people that you want to interact with, church group, something like that, and run the same workshop. It has all the instructions for how to do it, and you can do the same thing. Get the packet back to Mark and we'll take that data and that input as part of the process. So another way, if somebody's not able to participate at one of the public meetings, check out a DIY kit and run it with the people who you want to talk to. I guess just jumping back, once the survey and map.social are live, I'd encourage everybody in this room to go ahead and take it and tell some friends and family members about it. So you'll be in the loop when that all goes live. Mark says the goal is 1,000.
I'm going to get 1,000 surveys back.
I always say there's no right number, but a goal, a number to hit is a good, is a good thing to have. Goals are good, that's what the comprehensive plan is all about. As we get toward the end of summer and into early fall, we're going to be doing a program of key stakeholder interviews. So we're going to work to build out a list, or who are the people who we need to talk to and have more of an in-depth, one-on-one, one-on-two, one-on-three conversation with? We're going to do a business community workshop. We're probably going to work with the Chamber of Commerce on putting that together. And then as we get a little further into fall, we'll take all this feedback, everything that we've heard, the research that we've done, our field reconnaissance, and we'll put together what we call an existing conditions memo. I mentioned that at the front end of this. Kind of our book report. We want to give the village confidence that we're ready to get into that visioning and recommendations phase of the process. So again, I just want to thank all of you for spending an evening here, letting me take part of the commission's time. It really is an honor for our firm to be able to do this work for the village. And I think I speak for our project team here that the most important thing to us is that at the end of the process, that the plan is implementable and that it's the community's plan. It's not a House de Levine plan for Villa Park, it's not Planning and Zoning Commission's plan, but that it really is a plan that reflects the long-term vision of the whole community. That's our, that's our main goal here when we get to adoption at the end of this 15- to 18-month process. So I'm going to turn it back over to the chair and I just want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so that is all of our business for this evening. Is there anyone wishing to comment on, further comment from the public on what was heard here tonight? Or any comments on non-agenda items? I do have one email that came in this afternoon from Bob Wagner. And he says, hello, Jason and Mark. It is disappointing that discussion about the village's comprehensive plan had to be scheduled the same time as the meeting of the Environmental Concerns Commission. I know that some of our commissioners would have liked to attend the meeting as the public engagement process continues. I hope that there will be a better effort to publicize these meetings and to avoid conflicts with the meetings of other commissions in the village. The proposal for the comprehensive plan describes reaching out to a wide variety of residents, not just the Planning and Zoning Commission. When will this outreach and public engagement begin? Please read this email during the public comments section of the meeting. I want to personally assure Bob Wagner that there will be ample opportunities. I mean, I think the consultants have already made that clear, but there will be many meetings over the coming months and more than a year. So I encourage Bob and anyone from the community to get out to any meeting they can and take the surveys and do all that because I know from experience that it's hard to get people to offer their input in these kind of things. You know, we've, you could have a community of 1,500 and have 15 people turn out for a vision session or whatever term you want to use for it. But for, so please, get out there and participate any way you can. So any other business, any other comments from the commission on anything? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do you want us to... Attorneys?
Yes, we'll take those.
So moved. Second? Call in favor? All right, we're adjourned.